... condo ended up burning down. The flag was in there. And when the veterans group here found out that she no longer had her flag, they made sure that she had a replacement. And they presented that to me today so that I could get that to her.
Let's continue their legacy by upholding the values of our lost ones that they lived by, such as duty, loyalty, and courage. By working toward a more just and peaceful world, we can ensure that their sacrifices were not in vain.
My name is Sarah Maldonado. I've been a resident of Maricopa for the last seven years. I am an orthopedic physician assistant in the valley. That's my day job, but I like to paint and draw in my free time. I work really long hours sometimes, early morning with sunrise and driving down home with the sunset. And the best part about the commute is the horses when they're out. The traffic could be bumper to bumper. It could be awful traffic, as we all know the 347 is. But the second you see those horses out there grazing, it doesn't even matter. It kind of pulls you to the present and reminds me that even though the traffic isn't great, I love living down here and experiencing that. I loved the opportunity to share something personal to me with everybody else. I certainly didn't think I would be picked to paint a mural for the city of Maricopa. I just hope it inspires someone to reach out for any opportunity that they don't think is available to them, because you never know what can happen.
One, two, three. This Veterans Memorial is a new, important part of our community, and it's important to us for many, many reasons. It's a constant reminder of the cost of freedom and the importance of peace. Being here will remind us of their bravery, their selflessness, and inspire us to strive for a better world and a stronger nation. I especially want to thank Jim Busi, because this dream, this vision, all started with him and a conversation with some additional veterans, and then a conversation with our city manager, and then it just blossomed from there.
If you ask Jim for anything, I don't care what it is, he would make it happen. So I said to Jim, wouldn't it be nice if Maricopa had our own memorial park? And next thing I know, I get a call from Jim that says, hey, Terry, I want you to start this 501(c)(3). I got a business card. We're going to meet with the city.
What seemed like overnight, he already was making contact with people with funding and grants, and somebody needed to write the grant, so he was already on a learning what he needed to do to get that done. It just was something that was very quick. There just was so much that happened so fast, because he just was, when he would do anything, he was just 100% all in. And so it's hard for that not to be contagious to anybody around him.
But the energy, the enthusiasm from Jim and Terry made it easy to volunteer. Although we lost Jim along the way, we subsequently gained more people stepping up to get us here today.
My uncle was a man of strength and of a waiving resolve. His dedication to being of service was matched only by his commitment to his family and his community. He carried the values of honor, of discipline, and kindness into every aspect of his life, embodying what it means to be a true patriot.
When a veteran passes away, their spouse is presented a flag at their funeral. So when my uncle passed away, my Aunt Gail was presented his flag. And about a year after she moved back, her condo ended up burning down. The flag was in there. And when the veterans group here found out that she no longer had her flag, they made sure that she had a replacement. And they presented that to me today so that I could get that to her.
Let's continue their legacy by upholding the values of our lost ones that they lived by, such as duty, loyalty, and courage. By working toward a more just and peaceful world, we can ensure that their sacrifices were not in vain.
My name is Sarah Maldonado. I've been a resident of Maricopa for the last seven years. I am an orthopedic physician assistant in the valley. That's my day job, but I like to paint and draw in my free time. I work really long hours sometimes, early morning with sunrise and driving down home with the sunset. And the best part about the commute is the horses when they're out. The traffic could be bumper to bumper. It could be awful traffic, as we all know the 347 is. But the second you see those horses out there grazing, it doesn't even matter. It kind of pulls you to the present and reminds me that even though the traffic isn't great...
June 17th, regular city council meeting and call to order. I would like to invite Bishop Dion from Blaze Ministries to come forward for the invocation. And Councilmember Nor, would you please do the pledge? Thank you. I'll rise if you're able.
In this city council meeting, we pray tonight, oh God, that you will bless our city officials, all those who work tirelessly to keep this city, oh God, in a prosperous way. I pray that you would continue to bless all that are here. Bless us individually and collectively. Let your will be done in this meeting tonight, that you will be glorified. We thank you and we praise you now, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united, in the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much, Bishop Dion. I always love having you guys in the audience as well. And Councilmember Nor, thank you very much. Appreciate that. That'll take us to roll call. And I am not going to say, Vanessa, do you mind? Take it away.
Councilmember Gettle. Councilmember Nor.
Present.
Councilmember Lierman.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade. Mayor Smith.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you very much. That'll take us, we don't have any proclamations, acknowledgements, awards, and presentations, so that'll take us to item 3.1, which is the report from the mayor. Councilmembers, yes, Councilmember Marsh.
On the 6th of June, I attended the Pinal Partnership Breakfast Meeting. The topic was education and workforce readiness in Pinal County. And it was a good set of stories. We have a well-trained population. We have plenty of education for them and plans for more going forward. So Pinal County is very healthy on education and readiness. On the 9th, I had a luncheon meeting with former city manager Rick Horst, discussing the past, present, and future of Maricopa. Very informative. On the 10th, I participated in the groundbreaking for Maricopa's new field house, which it underconstructs just east of the former police substation by Copper Sky. That's going to have multiple indoor facilities for youth, adults, and seniors. It's going to be a very interesting property and well worth the investment, especially if you like tennis or pickleball. And that's about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Marsh. Councilmember Manfredi.
Thank you so much. So as you all know, one of our most important things that we have to worry about and take care of and work for is the 347. So tomorrow, I have a meeting with MAGG transportation, where of course, eventually I'll talk to a bunch of people about 347 and what's important at 347, and what we need to do, and blah, 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 all exciting stuff. Friday is going to be really exciting, the 20th. A lot of us are actually driving up to Payson either Thursday night or Friday morning so that we can talk before the ADOT board to talk about what is important to the people of Maricopa. Sadly, we're being pitted against other projects within the state, so I think there'll be a lot of people there from the other project within the state, as well as a lot of people from the city of Maricopa. I think last I heard was 18 people attending live and a bunch of people attending online. The room sits about 30 people. So yeah, it's an exciting time. So pray for us as we drive up there, because it's going to be fun and exciting. And this coming Friday, we're going to know a lot, a lot. I think there'll be a lot of clear view of where we're going to be on the 347 funding, either good or bad. But Friday is going to be one of those days where, you know, we're going to figure out a whole lot. And then we go from there.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Manfredi. Councilmember Nor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to talk about a couple of things that I've been able to be a part of over the last couple of weeks. And one was the dementia awareness forum today that was held at the library by the new nonprofit that is being started. And it was fantastic. It was a great speaker. I learned a lot about dementia awareness, about really cognitive decline, what it means, and how to understand where people are coming from when they're facing these situations, both the caregiver and the patient, for lack of a better word. And I look forward to what this group is going to do within the city. It was announced that the Memory Cafe is going to be able to get started here. And one of the providers in attendance offered sponsorship right there on the spot, which was really exciting for the future of the city and for the future of those who are dealing on a day-to-day basis with memory care and dementia issues. So I'm looking forward to that. And thank you, Ron, for putting that together. It was really eye-opening for me. And then last night was the Cultural Affairs and Arts Committee meeting. And we've got a fantastic group of folks who serve on that committee, and a lot getting done. They were able to hear the presentation from Quinn about the new partnership policy that we're hoping to get going and how that will definitely work with the arts and the cultural affairs community and how we can make some projects come to life with that. And I'll also be in Payson on Friday for the big vote. Looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nor. Councilmember Lierman.
I just wanted to mention tomorrow, I'm very excited about a regional meeting that the city is hosting for law enforcement coordination. What we're looking for is Pinal County, Maricopa County, Gila River, and the Maricopa Police Department partnering together to make sure all the resources are available to our citizens that drive on the 347. So just making sure that every resource available from the state, the county, the city, is used to support drivers on 347, volunteer services, and everything. So we're looking to identify ways that each group can serve our community. So I'm looking forward to the outcome of that meeting tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lierman. All right. So I know last night, we had a general plan, community open house. Rudy, I was looking online and saw that you had maybe 30, 40 people there. So that was a really good turnout. I hope you walked away with a lot of good information from our residents. And I know that there will be one more opportunity, so I'll make sure, that'll be later in the fall. I'll make sure to make an announcement about that as well. And then I too, attended Ron Smith's Senior Living Dementia Awareness Program. I have to tell you guys, this is such a beautiful thing that's happening here. Because I've watched Ron Smith wrestle and wrestle and wrestle with how to do things for seniors. And as you all know, we live on a tight budget, and getting money for more and more programs is very challenging. And so Ron has just really wrestled with this and brought it to a point where he created his own nonprofit. And I think through that nonprofit and through partnerships, we're going to be able to make wonderful things happen in addition to what's already offered for seniors, more things. But this dementia... But this dementia awareness was wonderful, and the Memory Cafe getting started is, that's really a great place to start. So thank you very much, Ron. I appreciate that. If you want to know more, please get ahold of Ron Smith. I know he could use maybe volunteers for this and that, I don't know. I don't know. Well, I'm sorry, probably shouldn't have offered you up that way. Okay, we always have to talk about 347. As you can see, there's a variety of things happening with 347. So two weeks ago, Arizona State Transportation Board meeting was held virtually, and that was the last opportunity in a work session for the Transportation Board to ask questions, ask for more options, and they did exactly that, specifically for 347. So I'm glad that they are taking this seriously, they're taking all of the input that they've received. Now over 1,400 individual emails have been sent to each of them. Since that meeting, myself, Katie, and Ben have had five additional meetings. We've had one with the engineer, one with Director Toth, and three with board members. Actually, one of those is still to come tomorrow. And so we're taking this very seriously. This is our opportunity to really take advantage of what I call the greatest partnership I've seen. I know Mayor Price, you went for 11 years straight at board meetings. I went for three years since I've been the mayor, and I need them to take this seriously. This is truly the best partnership I've ever seen teed up for the State Transportation Board. And so we're working hard to make sure that the board members, who are our allies, are working hard to get the results we're hoping for. So we'll know June 20th. In case you are very interested, and I think it's going to be an exciting meeting, we will have a watch party on Friday at the community center. It will start at 9 o'clock, you can come a little earlier. It is to watch the meeting, which is an education in itself. It's quite fun to see how this all works, how the bacon is made, is that how they say? Yeah, sausage, how the sausage is made. And so it'll start at 9:00 AM. They will have donuts and coffee at the community center. We want to pack out this house, because one of us, probably Ben, maybe me, we haven't decided for sure, is going to hold up an iPad and basically say, "Look what's happening with our watch party." This is how many people are interested in what's happening on 347. So we want to pack out that room. You all are welcome. There's no cost, free donuts, free coffee, and just a lot of learning, but also just a lot of getting to know everybody who's interested in what's happening in the city. And so that's what I have for the report from the mayor. That'll take us to the report from the ci-
Mayor.
Oh, oh, hi, Vice Mayor. Thank you very much. Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Sorry for the problems with telecommunications, but just wanted to let everyone know that I attended the fieldhouse groundbreaking with several other council members, and it was exciting to see the contractor that had worked on the Copper Sky project looking to be working on this project. He was quite excited about it, very excited about it, and it is interesting to watch a program grow and flourish, and then the cycle of buildings in that, now this particular building is going to be recycled for something else. And so it was quite an opportunity to see that expression. So I too, as I'm not with you tonight, I'm actually, I'm actually in San Diego, but will be returning to home via Payson, so I plan on leaving here and being in attendance at the function, ADOP function this end of this week. And I had put out notice too about the watch party. Hopefully, those of you who received the email or see the email from me inviting you to the watch party, hope that you will in fact attend. It's going to be a great, a great thing, so. Thank you, Madam Mayor, appreciate it, and good to be reconnected.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Okay, that'll take us to the city manager report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just real quick, as we, this is our last council meeting of the fiscal year, and it's always an opportunity for us to kind of close the book on one chapter and move forward into the next. Obviously, the budget was approved at the last meeting and we're able to move forward, but just wanted to take an opportunity to thank our staff and recognize them for all the tremendous things that they're doing. You know, when we look across our community and see clean streets, when we see art projects being installed, when we see, you know, roadways being repaved, all of the different things, fields being maintained, everything that goes into running a city, we have a great staff. And just as we close the year, I just wanted to thank them for all the great things that they do. We couldn't be a premier city, we can't be a premier city without having premier employees, and so that's our first step, and we'll continue to strive for greatness.
Thank you, City Manager. I totally concur with that. I know we've talked often about how many things were happening between January and June 20th. I mean, it includes 347, it includes the budget, includes the open houses that we had for the half-cent sales tax, discussions on half-cent sales tax, and the general plan. Lots going on, and I know I'm missing some big things. And so a lot to wrestle with for all of our employees, and I appreciate it as well. All right, that'll take us to the call to the public. At this time, I will open the call to the public. I do not have any speaker cards today, so if you would like to approach the podium, please feel free to do so and state your name.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Jim Devenezia. I'm the Community Support Specialist with the Police Department. And Mayor, you had just stated that there's a lot of things going on, and with that, there's a lot of things that could fall through the cracks. And I just want to highlight one of those things that is not going to fall through the cracks, and it's the You Are Not Alone program, the YANA program with the Police Department. We had our second annual luncheon this past Saturday, and for those who don't know, YANA started close to 10 years ago with the idea that what we're going to do is have volunteers check in and make phone calls and be a support for Maricopa residents, most of them seniors, most lonely, most isolated, and most don't even have family members in our area, to be a support, to make sure they're okay, keep that social connection, and also just to make sure that they're not incapacitated, for instance, or they're not unfortunately on the floor and truly can't get up. So we've been having volunteers for the past 10 years, making phone calls and doing that, and we decided last year to have our first luncheon, we decided to do it again, and we had a phenomenal time. It was over at the community center. We had 25 YANA participants come, and these are 25 participants, mostly seniors that don't know one another, but have one thing in common, that they receive phone calls or receive supports from the volunteers. So we had them all seated at tables, talking with one another, getting to know one another, and having that bond. We had 10 of their guests, some of them were drivers. We had eight Maricopa Police Department cadets. One of the coolest things is to see these cadets sitting at each one of the tables with the seniors, and one of the funniest things, but yet one of the heartwarming things, when one was going to have a picture taken with two of the ladies that was sitting next to him, and he said, "Come on, girls, let's pose." And he had one on each arm, taking the picture, and it was phenomenal. The Chief Goodman came, we had two lieutenants came, our chaplain, we had six YANA representatives, other helpers from the community, and I was honored to be part of it too. And very briefly, I'll just take a minute for this, I just want to highlight some of the sponsors that we've had to support it. Art Mobile with Lisa Swanson, Nick Brooks with the city was phenomenal in securing food and the arrangements, Exceptional Community Hospital, those water bottles or thermoses, so not just water bottles, phenomenal. Everyone loved them, they went to every single bag, and they're also going to go out in the community. Harris Auction Hotel and Casino offered a $350 gift basket. Legacy Traditional School, first graders drew or colored flags and did cards. Some of the things were, to be a first grader again, the naivete and innocence was phenomenal. So everyone got one of those cards. Mandy's Wine Bar did the catering, great food, great breakfast. The cadets were a hit, and also, none of it would have been possible if it wasn't for the YANA volunteers, those who give their time, their hearts, to make phone calls and be a support for our seniors. So it's a great thing that I'm proud to oversee, I'm proud of what Ron is doing, and it's a nice collaboration that we have in the city for the seniors, so, thank you.
Oh, perfect timing.
Oh, that was a good time.
All right, would anyone else like to approach the podium and speak during the call to the Seeing none, I will close the call to the public, and that'll take us to the consent agenda. This evening, we have consent agenda items 7 dot 1 through 7 dot 11. I have no speaker cards, council. Do you have any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Manfredi, seconded by Councilmember Marsh. One last chance for questions, comments. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Henry, just for verification, that was an aye to approve, correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously. All right, that'll take us to regular agenda item. First is item 8 dot 1, and our presentation will be from Derek.
Good evening, Mayor Smith. Councilmembers, Derek Shear with the Development Services Department, Planning Division, here to present items 8.1 and 8.2 together as one presentation. It's a resolution 25 dash 22 and ordinance 25 dash 08. These are for planning cases GPA 23 dash 05 and PAD 23 dash 04, a minor general plan amendment and a planned area development rezon request. The applicant for these cases is the Rose Law Group on behalf of S.P. Dunn Auction LLC, located at the southeast corner of West Farrell Road and North John Wayne Parkway, as you see here. The site is right across the street from Harris Auction Casino. The project area is approximately 184 acres. It's a request, again, for a minor general plan amendment and a rezon from the Avela planned area development to the Maricopa Town Center planned area development. The minor general plan request, as you can see on the maps, current general plan future land use map designates this site as commercial, medium-density residential, and master-planned community. The applicant is proposing to change this designation to a mixed use for the entire 184 acres. As a companion request, the rezon will have the current designation for the Avela planned area development, which has the base zoning of CB1 local business and TR transitional, to rezon to planned area development for Maricopa Town Center. So the CB1 and TR are base zoning, currently the PAD is an overlay over it. Now it'll change to PAD zoning for Maricopa Town Center. The original Avela was approved back in 2005, almost 20 years ago. It has not developed, development conditions in the city and the area have changed, and the applicant is coming in with this proposal to address those changes. The Maricopa Town Center is a more unique PAD than what we've had. It's kind of similar, if you can recall, the Murphy Park PAD, where it's a flexible PAD zoning. As we can see here, we don't have designated land uses as of yet. It's a flexible, where they can overlap with each other depending on the market conditions, where non-residential, single-family residential can expand or contract depending on the market conditions. The overall maximum unit count, residential units for the development for all 184 acres, will be 2,113 residential units, with an overall over the 184 acres, maximum density of 11.4. But in this PAD, what they will be allowed to do is to transition that, those residential units either into, say, one side of it or the other side, depending if it's going to be some sort of a townhouse development, mixed-use development, or traditional single-family development. But over the entire area, it'll be capped at that 2,113 overall units. On the right side of the screen, you can see sort of, we have in the PAD a lot of illustrative product designs that'll give, you know, the inspiration for what is going to be developed there. Staff worked very diligently with the applicant who's here to answer any specific questions that you may have. They also have a presentation, should the council like to see it. In formulating the whole PAD around this flexible concept of if this or there, to create this unique one. The PAD, as I said, permit that variety of residential land use categories, and when we see on the right side, that illustrative product design that's in the PAD, this lays out for all the different types of single-family residential units. We do have lots that can go down to about 2,500 square feet, so pretty small lots, but when you look at the designs for them, you can get a better understanding of the type of development that they're looking for with the smaller lots, creating what's called like autocourt design or Z lot, zero lot line, where one, the residence will be right on the property line of one, but then have that buffer on the other side, when that other side will be on the zero. And so, you know, keeping this noncookie cutter development pattern that traditionally we've seen here with the subdivisions, this allows the opportunity to get pretty unique with these development patterns. The proposed general plan future land use designation of mixed use is, will be consistent with the proposed Maricopa Town Center PAD, the general plan, objective B1 point 4 point 6. We want to see the transition of all properties zoning designated, that's the old Pinal County, that the legacy zoning and our old zoning ordinance move into the current zoning ordinance, and this application helps with that. Also, we want to encourage the location of neighborhood commercial and mixed use adjacent to or within residential areas, and this application certainly does that. Conformance with the zoning ordinance, once, upon approval of the general plan amendment, approval of the zone amendment, it would conform with the zoning ordinance. However, the general plan amendment has to occur prior to the rezon request, because without the general plan, it's not supported. The applicant has done the neighborhood outreach, native, excuse me. On March 26, first notification letters were sent, and sites, the site signs were posted. There's a neighborhood meeting on April 10 that was well-attended at the Copper Sky, the citizen participation report in the council's packet, and then also in staff's report to the council, details, the attendance of that, of people at the Copper Sky, the questions, concerns that they had, and then in the report, how the applicant is addressing those. There's a newspaper notice, a second notification letter sent out, the Planning Commission meeting was back on May 12 with a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission, and now here at the city council meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the city council to approve minor general plan amendment case number GPA 23 dash 05, and also the rezon zoning map amendment case number PAD 23 dash 04. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, the applicant is here, and they have a presentation, should you like to see it.
Thank you very much. I think we'll go to the open public hearing first. At this point, I will open this public hearing, and I do not have any speaker cards. Would anyone like to come forward and speak on this agenda item? All right, very good. Seeing none, we will move on to council? Oh, please, come forward. Come forward and give us your name, please.
William Haskell.
Oh, in the mic. Okay, yeah.
In the mic, so it gets picked up for the record.
Thank you. A question for you, I'll put this to you. What you're telling, what you're saying here is your-
This is a-
Sir. Of course, thank you. What I understand this to be is he's going to have the house on the lot line. Am I correct in that?
Somewhat.
Why? No setbacks for fire or anything like that, or passage through there?
My understanding at this point is this is a general plan change and a zoning change, and the layout has not been presented at this point, so I think asking those questions at this point is-
Okay, you just brought up my other point. If you don't have a layout, how can you bring it to approval?
For a zoning change or a general plan change?
Both.
Yeah.
How can you bring it to approval if you don't have a layout?
That's generally how it's done. I'll let Derek address that.
Well, that's not how I would have done it on the Planning Commission myself. I would have had the layout in front of us before we even brought it to the-
Okay.
-Planning Commission or a city council.
Would you please give us your name also, and to the mic?
Yes, I am William Haskell, or you can call me Bill.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, please. So, um, what's being proposed is a variety of possible development patterns. Uh, if I can scroll back here in the applicant's, uh, PAD book, which is linked to the agenda on the city's website, uh, I did not put all the pages up on the screen, uh, for brevity, but it shows all the different, uh, development types that could occur under this PAD, going from the regular, uh, subdivisions that we have with a five-foot setback, usually five to ten feet on the sides, uh, or doing zero foot. And it's, it, I wouldn't say it's common, but it's done a lot, and all over the country, where everything is sort of shifted over. And you can have it on the lot line, but then you have the five feet on the other, or maybe you have the shared driveway in between two units, and it sort of staggers going along down the block. Uh, it allows for a whole different variety of, um, development patterns. Traditionally, what we have with PADs, uh, that you have that box that you have to build in, and you have what we call the development window, where you have your required sideyards, your front yards, your rear yards, and how much area that you can do. But what this is doing is this is sort of shifting that development box inside that window, sort of over to the edge, or back, or right dead in the center. And what it is, it opens it up for more opportunity for development from different kind of home builders who'd build these different kinds of products. This would allow for townhouses, for example. Those are zero lot lines. Uh, condos, those are zero lot lines. Uh, if you had to have a sideyard setback, you wouldn't be able to have those type of units. And this is what the PAD is, uh, proposing, basically saying, we want the ability to be able to do all these different types of residential developments, should the market allow for it.
Very good. Thank you. Would it? Oh.
It sounds like you're planning for a, uh, home that's gonna be of mid to low cost. Am I correct?
I do not know. That'll be up to the developers.
Okay, I mean, that's what it sounds like to me, and that is a good idea. But I still have problems with setting a house on a lot line, because you're gonna interfere maybe with the neighbor next door for some reason, and there's gonna be a bit of a problem there, at least from my own, uh, viewpoint anyways. I think if you don't have sets, setbacks on each side of the house, you're opening it up to people coming in here and telling you, well, this is the way you planned it. That's all I had. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Derek, just a question on that. Um, at the point at which they determine what they are building, we will review those aspects again. Is that, yes?
Yes. We will review them through a preliminary plat and a final plat, and then, uh, if I could just address the last comment from the gentleman. Usually when something is on the zero lot line, there is a, uh, use and repair easement that's placed on the property, so they can still access that side of their house, do the maintenance and repairs, uh, and so there isn't that disagreement between neighbors coming on someone else's property.
Very good. Thank you very much. I know when it comes to that point, when we're looking at those designs, we'll probably have a lot more questions, so I appreciate that. Um, would anyone else like to approach the podium? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, what questions, comments do you have?
None.
Councilmember Lerman? Would you like to see the presentation? She is requesting the presentation from the builder.
Mayor Smith, members of the council, my name's John Gillespie. I'm with the Rose Law Group. I'm really happy to be with you here tonight and to present a really exciting project in the city of Maricopa. One of the, the really exciting things is the development partner that's involved with the city here, which is Vestar, and Vestar is here with us tonight. Vestar is recognized as one of the, um, preeminent, uh, commercial developers here in the western United States, and they're based right out, out of Arizona. So, I'm excited about the partnership that they have here with the city to deliver, uh, mixed-use product. Um, as has kind of been discussed, we're, we're at a, the stage of working with your staff for the last couple of years to really set the framework in place, uh, to have really nice design guidelines, uh, robust development standards, um, and the, uh, that, that framework in place to where now developers are gonna come forward and be able to say, we have this specific project, and go through the, the city's process, and, and to the, the gentleman's, uh, comment, uh, we, we got into some of those specifics, and we'll continue to work with your staff as, as development projects get, get brought forward. So, just wanted to, uh, just briefly, I'll just, to give a little idea for Vestar, 'cause maybe not everyone knows, but that think, when you're thinking of Tempe Market Place, or thinking of Desert Ridge, these are the exciting projects that they've developed, um, and we're, we're really, um, looking forward to a, a similar, uh, project being able to be developed here in, in Maricopa. Um, I, I don't necessarily, I, I've got a lot of kind of pretty pictures, and I'm happy to kind of go through, I'm related to that, uh, Mayor Smith, but, um, I, I want to be sensitive to, to your time, and if there's any other specific questions or ideas, um, on top of, of kind of what I've already presented here, happy to, to go into it.
Perfect. Councilmember Lerman, did you have specific questions? Please. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate your presentation. Um, I did have a question. It's about the housing, and I know tonight is zoning, um, but we have quite a few apartments here in Maricopa, and so I'm really looking forward to, um, townhomes, condos, other types of multifamily, um, and so I'm hoping this project might hit that market, um, where it's a little bit different than an apartment, um, living, and it provides a, a more diverse, um, home option for our families here in Maricopa.
Great comment, Councilmember Lerman, and absolutely, the PAD is designed to, to really give a lot of flexibility to the market to, to determine, um, the specific housing products, but we have that full range of, of townhomes, all the way up to, to larger single-family, um, lots. The key kind of thing that's being provided with, with this project, I'll show you up here on the screen, Avelia, the PAD, did, did foresee these commercial uses kind of being put on this, this parcel, as well as a transition area, you know, medical facilities and residential, um, uh, products to more residential within Avelia. So what's being done here with the Maricopa Town Center PAD is we're making it a more robust mixed-use environment, where we can, um, design around the Sonoran Desert Parkway, which has come, uh, come in and, uh, deliver excellent products, both from a multifamily, a single-family, um, uh, option. So, we're excited about that, and, and, um, look forward to seeing that wide range of, of housing to support the commercial being developed here.
Thank you, Councilmember Lerman. Councilmember Nor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. I don't necessarily have a question. I'm just glad you were able to come forward and, and present, um, about Vestar being involved in this, because I'm super excited to have Vestar involved in a development in Maricopa. You know, if Vestar is doing a development, you've arrived. And we know we've arrived, us in Maricopa, for a long time, but now we're going to get, um, the retail and the commercial, um, that we see in these other areas that we long for, and all of my favorite restaurants are in Vestar development, so I'm super excited for this to get going. That's all I have.
Thank you very much to Councilmember Nor. Councilmember Manfredi?
Thank you so much for the presentation so far. Um, when I attended the event, eh, Copper Sky, it was the Copper Sky. Uh, when I attended the event at Copper Sky for the public meeting, and I looked at all the boards, I'm assuming you have them all on this slideshow, and I looked at the boards, I saw a lot of different variations of housing, so I saw that there was some townhouse idea. Now, this is all conceptual, 'cause we're not approving that today. We're approving basically, um, a minor, minor general plan and land use amendment to change the land use from commercial, medium density, and master planned to mixed use for approximately a hundred and eighty-four acres. That's what we're doing today. And we're gonna get into a lot of conversations, and, and Bill, um, mentioned, you know, like, um, lot lines, and everybody's talking about it. That's not what we're here for today. Today is, we're, we'll talk about those lot lines, they'll go before P and Z, um, and, and they'll go before the council, and we'll talk about design standards and all of that stuff sometime down the road, hopefully next week. You ready?
We're, we're rearing and ready about what we're gonna do.
Hopefully very soon, is, I guess my, that was a joke about next week. Hopefully very soon. And Councilmember Nor mentioned it, that there's a lot of stores and businesses that work with Vestar. Um, and a lot of the stuff that you see people asking for every single day in the city of Maricopa work with the Vestar. And, and if you, you had a slideshow up that showed Tempe Marketplace and, and Desert Ridge and Scottsdale Marketplace, I think it was, uh, there's a bunch of different places, um, town centers that has been developed by Vest, Vestar, and I really do believe we would be in good, I don't wanna say lucky, but I think we'd be very well-served by Vestar coming to the city of Maricopa and developing a quality product for the people of Maricopa. Now, are there gonna be people that don't like some aspects of it? Of course. Um, I, I always joke all the time, and I say, we can cure cancer, and people would complain about overpopulation. Um, so it doesn't really matter what you do, always, there's always gonna be some, some people unhappy with it, but the goal is to make the overall community a better place and more sustainable, um, keeping people off of the three forty-seven by providing jobs, and this will be hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs in the area. Um, during construction, tons of jobs, after construction, tons of jobs in the retail and commercial space. I think I seen something where there's office space in there, too, and that's one of the biggest complaints I get, is there's no office space in the city of Maricopa, and it's true, there's not. Um, I know. I rent it. Um, so I understand it, and when you look at it, this is something that, you know, hopefully, the community embraces and, and enjoys to have here, and then, if not, um, a couple of years from now, just say I told you so, and that, when, when they're all shopping and eating there. But thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. Okay, um, I would-
Can you hear me, ma'am?
Yes, yes, perfect. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Continue.
I'm here to, to have your questions and problems, so I can go harder than the presentation I, I received, or even part of it did not. But, but, but I, but I, I tend to agree with, uh, Councilmember Manfredi, in, in terms of what we are doing often is trying to support the constituents that live in the community, the community members. So that most of the decisions are being made, most of the, the discussions that are taking place in planning and zoning, so we can support the community. And I think that, I think most people get that, and I think most people would, would be assured that they would want to have that kind of opportunity to see the city grow in a smart way. That is the way that we're trying to do it, that's the way that I work at it, but we do. And so, I, I, I think that, given the opportunity to see things happen, to see other vendors such as Vestar coming to our community to help support and make it a better place, I think that we're doing an awesome job. I know planning and zoning works extremely hard. Um, Rudy, can't speak much more to Rudy and, and, and his operation, uh, for how, how well he handles his operations, and Mike as well. But I think that, you know, we, we must, we will and we must continue with the will of the people to continue providing quality services and, and, and opportunity for, for jobs. Uh, I think we will continue to do that, and I think, uh, in the long run, in the bottom run, at least on what I receive when I go to Fry's and people are talking to me about what they'd like to see done, and, and, you know, it tells me that we're on the right track, and we'll continue to try to do it right there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I, it, the, the word flexible is interesting to me, 'cause I think it might be the first time we've seen something like this. I might be wrong there, but, um, it just sounds very interesting. But as I looked at the ideas and concepts, I was very excited. I, too, am very excited for Vestar. I think that it's a quality partnership with them coming to our community as well. Um, just a couple seeds that I would like to plant along with what Councilmember Lerman indicated. I, looking at the concepts, the ideas, I did like that I saw multifamily, and I do hope that it's duplexes, triplexes, more of that, but regardless of what type it ends up being proposed, I like that it's on Sonoran Desert Parkway, because I listened into some of the comments that came from the public during the, um, opportunity to speak there and read some of their notes, and I think it would be great for the multifamily to be toward Sonoran Desert Parkway rather than over on the Farrell roadside. So I encourage the developer to continue looking at that. Um, and then, one last request that I did share, uh, with Jordan Rose, our community is super eager for more commercial, and this Vestar opportunity is phenomenal. I know that typically, housing goes in before commercial, but I'm requesting, let's do it together, all in parallel, because of the fact that you have eighty thousand people here who want more commercial, who need more commercial. You have eighty thousand people and, you know, a plethora of homes across the city. Um, we're ready for you, so consider, consider that in terms of a parallel aspect. That's my, that's my, planting my little seed. All right. Any additional comments, questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Manfredi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Nor. Last opportunity for comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
Aye.
All right, I wanna make sure, Vice Mayor, that was an aye?
Yes, ma'am, yes, aye.
Okay, it's a yes, aye. Okay, very good. That, uh, passes ano- uh, anonymously. Unanimously. Okay. That will take us to, um, item eight dot two, which is the ordinance, same presentation. Counsel, do you have any questions? I have zero speaker cards. Any questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Nor, seconded by Councilmember Marsh. Another opportunity for questions, comments. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
That motion carries as well. All right, thank you very much. That'll take us to item eight dot three, and I believe that, uh, Josh is going to be
How about now? There we go. Thank you. Um, Mayor, Council, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm really excited to talk about a few things. Uh, tonight, we're gonna discuss some of the things going on in the Office of Economic Opportunity, uh, talk about some of the partnerships that we have that help us move forward, uh, talk about some of the strategic documents that we have currently, and some of the things we're gonna do in the future to, uh, continue to be in the right path. Um, I also have a couple guest speakers that we'll introduce to you a little bit later in this presentation for you, so. Now, one of the documents, and we'll pull a few here, uh, we use many of these as we talk with developers, as we talk with different groups, and it's nice to see, particularly with this, our, our mission statement, unlock the full potential of the city of Maricopa to create a thriving and durable community, that some of these things are being picked up by our residents and by some of the groups we meet with. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, I know, we, we know you guys wanna be thriving, and we understand that. We think this could help that, and so it's nice to see that's picked up at multiple levels. A focus that, uh, was passed by council just a couple meetings ago, again, that focus for job creation and business development will highlight some of the things going on with our business, um, industrial triangle, um, and business park, um, as well as some of the, the partnerships working to help that, uh, workforce development, as Councilmember Marsh discussed with Penal County and other partners. Again, uh, Mayor, State of the City, that live, work, play, and stay, and how we use that to try to attract everyone that we talk with. Uh, we have kicked off a, uh, five-year strategic plan, RFP. The last one was done in two thousand and seventeen, um, so, eh, there are different cities will do these at different time periods, so we're coming up on, almost closer to that ten-year mark. Um, those do get a little bit, um, outdated, um, so look, and this one will be more at the five-year mark to, to keep us, you know, focused on that area, so. I'm excited to have that coming in in the next few weeks with those, uh, requests. So, um, some of the council may have seen, uh, document like this or similar to this, and we've talked about this, so we have about a little over one point two billion dollars of annual leakage, and we highlighted a few of those areas that we see that leakage, and we'll talk about some of the things that we wanna do to, to correct that, not only from the tax revenue gained for the city through sales tax, but really for the quality of life of each of our residents, as they have more opportunities to shop with, the opportunities like Vestar and many others that would be coming in. Nice to see, one of these, we had about eight point, or eighty-seven million dollars of leakage in, um, home improvement and gardening, and so we're excited with the improvement of Tractor Supply, soon-to-be Lowe's, Home Depot, to see that trend changing, so. Now, here's just a few of those highlights within this last about twelve months that have come in, and I highlight these, uh, understanding that economic development's role is not necessarily each and every one of these individual businesses, but setting the stage for some of these b- businesses to be successful and be able to come into a location. to be successful and be able to come into a location. And so nice to see many of those. We've, I think all of us here have, have gone to a few of those and hopefully we'll, we'll go to a few more to help them be successful. Now, this is a picture, and I know I'm going through a few of these quick, but this is sort of setting the stage of some of the different things going on. Now, this is a document that, uh, Rick Horst shared, uh, last year with some updates. Um, and again, the reason we share this is to not highlight each and every one of these individual businesses, but to show how this progresses over time. Um, so one of the things we try to do is to track some of those larger anchor stores to come in, work with the developers to come. In this case, we can kind of highlight that Home Depot came and then now we see a lot of the development going in around that. Um, and this is not a overnight thing that, that happens just great, here's someone that wants to come and it happens. We saw last year, we saw that some of those highlighted stores were in what we call that pre-application where they're working through Development Services and Rudy's team saying, "Hey, I want to understand what this would even look like if I came here." And then it progresses through to where now some of those that were just at that pre-app stage are now under construction. And additional, um, businesses are now at that pre-app stage or that development review process. And so how they work the Development Services team is a long process all the way through from where we bring in, here's a group that wants to develop a large site to a few years down the road at times where a business is coming in. Same kind of story here. Another one of these Lowe's soon to be opening within the next couple of weeks. Um, and where we showed a similar slide last year, it was very much conceptual and now some of those things are moving through. Where at least one of those highlighted on their Dukes is now open and serving some nice burgers. So, um, just excited to see again, but that is a process in that timelines of how these all, all develop. This one we highlight, um, again, this is years in the making where Development Services and a city has multiple departments working and saying, "How can we help some, some office space coming in?" And I'll highlight, so again, still at the, the pre-app stage, they're not guaranteed here, but we highlight this because what this project does is, is meets a couple of different needs within the cities. One of that main one is for those small businesses. And as we've already heard tonight, of being able to find office space of any kind in the city is very limited. Um, and this has always been the concept of this area is how can we bring in some more opportunities, what we call flex space, mixed-use space, um, for small businesses and things along those lines. So we're excited to see this come in again for a recent pre-app for this one and the next one right across that street, um, which will bring in, um, prick a, a, a nice dent into the needs of the city for the small businesses. And as we regularly meet with small businesses, that's, that's one of the biggest challenges and here echoed through the chamber as well. And this is kind of an elevation conceptual of what that could look like, matching the existing building out there by, by a strategy. So we do see, um, just kind of the last few years showing what this growth has looked like. We know we've seen growth from population standpoint as well as we're seeing some growth from our commercial, um, square footage. Um, so exciting to see and hope that, to see those trends continue as we keep working with developers. Now I highlighted again, uh, Mary, you talked about how the general plan, and I want to highlight this is, is an important fact. And so again, how we're working with each of the different, different development services, but all of our partners within the city and outside of the city. Um, general plan sets a stage for a lot of the things that we do. Um, and as we work with groups and try to point them into different, um, locations, I want to highlight just the land use and show a few slides of how that is when we say, "This would be a great location because all the things are planned around it already." So this is what that general plan looks like. Um, now you highlight that red is where we're talking about the commercial and then you'll see that darker gray is that employment. Um, and so we come from this and say, "How does this work where we then layer it down to the next layer, which shows some of that zoning?" Um, and in this particular case, what we've got here is we know that there is growth going in on the east side of town. And sometimes we can, well, how will that develop? What will the commercial be there? Um, we highlight that there is over 400 acres in that three-mile radius that is zoned currently or could be for commercial. And so there is still opportunities there and we just, um, as we work with our residents, as we work with developers, understand that sometimes there is a lag in that coming in. But I tell you, anytime we work with groups who say, "You know what? There's a great opportunity on this east side." And so we know there are some opportunities there, there is just some of the lag that happens with that. We also are working to make sure that we understand not only within the city limits, um, but our full planning area. And so the north portion of that, um, is this current city limits. You get that dark gray which is auction. And then as we look to what needs to happen in the city, not only now, but in the future, how all of these things come together, particularly with employment and commercial. So I'll shift a little bit. Um, this, uh, map is, is highlighting, so that star right in the middle is right in Maricopa. So that's 347 and Honeycutt. And that orange line is showing you where you can travel within about 45 minutes. Each of those blue circles are where folks are going to work. And as you see, unfortunately, not too many are very close to that star. Now, we can look at this as an opportunity. The city is great at exploring high-quality, well-educated employees. And so what that means is that as we work with folks that want to bring jobs here, the employment base is here. We want to change all those blue dots up in the, the, uh, Phoenix, Chandler, Tempe area and bring some of those down here. And we'll talk about a couple of things we're doing to, to make those possibilities. It is interesting to note, there was a recent study that I'll just highlight this one slide from, uh, Arizona Town Hall showing that they're predicting that, um, jobs will increase in Arizona faster than the national average. But the majority of that study is focusing on, do we have the workforce ready? Do we have, um, housing for that workforce and do we have the population for it? And Maricopa can answer yes to all of those things and that's a really, really exciting thing to be able to do. Um, you guys saw the housing study come together, Elliot Pollock, a few, uh, a few council meetings ago. And again, predicting that the city will continue to see that growth. And as, uh, the city and our Office of Economic Opportunity work with our development partners, um, and our partners for, um, education, as Councilmember Marsh talked about, Pinellas County regularly work with them, our school board members, our community colleges, um, we want to be ready for any of, uh, those jobs to come in and say, "Here is a plan, ready-to-go partners to be able to train that workforce." All of this comes to then being able to say, "We not only have people educated, ready-to-go, a climate that is planned, zoned, ready for it, and now we have sites that are ready to go." And so one of those that we highlight is what we call that business park, um, and how we're being able to attract, uh, businesses to it. So we've recently done a feasibility and master plan study of the area. Um, and we'd like to invite Tyler Paulson with Olson to come and share what, uh, some of the findings in that study. So I'd like to introduce Tyler Paulson up for that.
Awesome. Uh, like Josh said, I'm Tyler Paulson. I'm with Olson. Um, it's been a pleasure working with you guys for the past year, city staff. You guys have been amazing, um, to kind of develop this industrial triangle and look at the growth that Maricopa is bringing. Um, so I'll just go through high level, kind of, what's going on here. Basically 1,200 acres, um, with 10 million plus square feet of manufacturing and industrial facilities with 8 million of that, 8 million of that 10 million, um, will be rail-served industrial park. Uh, there's been a push to, awesome, thank you. Um, there's been a push to keep those jobs in Maricopa. So with that 10 million square feet, you're bringing in roughly 10,000-plus jobs, um, to the city and keeping that in the city versus moving that out of, out of town. Um, there's over 11 miles of rail throughout the industrial park. Um, that rail line, so the one that runs along the highway is a main line that goes from LA down to Houston. Um, so it's a very high travel, moves a ton of freight. Um, so keeping a stop here to do transload, um, activities and bring manufacturing into the city, um, is critical in keeping those jobs here in Maricopa. Um, and then the second slide, just high level, um, basically the idea in that blue section up above in the northwest corner, um, is kind of your light, um, industrial, um, and warehouse space. So think distribution centers like a Costco, Amazon. Um, and then as you work your way down to the southeast, it's more of your heavy industrial uses. So think chemical storage, um, that kind of use. Um, and then with that, you have 122 acres on the other side of Santa Rosa Wash will be, which is that workforce housing. Um, and then also in the pink, it's that manufacturing and technology space. So think like light industrial, um, TSMC, Intel, um, data center-type space. Um, and yeah, again, most of it's rail-served, which is a big differentiator because there's not a lot of rail-served industrial parks, um, in this region. Um, and yeah, that's just high-level overview. Uh, and then last slide is basically just some imaging, uh, just to kind of show what these facilities would look like. Josh, did you have anything? I'll turn it back to Josh on the PIF response data.
Why Tyler's up if council has any questions? We'll do questions again at the end, but if you'd like while he's up, have any questions about the, uh, study.
Council, any questions? Vice Mayor? I don't believe so. Thank you.
Not at this time.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you. So we are really excited. And so this is the first time we've seen, uh, shared that publicly, um, as we've seen some iterations and we've put some teasers out. Um, but the development community is very excited to see that, particularly the rail serve. We just don't have a lot of that in the state available. And a new rail-serve, um, park coming on, on the scene is, is excited for a lot of folks. We're very excited about that, so. We've talked about a few of these, um, current conditions and what that means for the city. We have a staff member on that is very passionate about talking about, uh, with all of the opportunities. And I want to, um, introduce Christian Price, who's going to talk about what we're doing to go out and attract some of these businesses. So with that, Christian.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much for having me, uh, letting us talk economic development tonight. It's always very exciting. Uh, as you've heard me say before, that economic development is the ultimate team sport. Uh, it's how things get done. And, uh, as you all, in your ultimate wisdom, have, uh, certainly gone out and started to prime this pump by, uh, buying 1,200 acres and gearing it towards economic development and what that might look like, especially when you're talking the industrial side. Uh, this can take a long time. And so you actually have to do a lot of things where you constantly have to get out there and put your feelers out there and solicit, and we call it business attraction, right? Uh, there's a lot of different ways to do it. Uh, as you saw before, you saw what happens when, uh, retail wants to come in and they just kind of have to find the spot. That's kind of the low-hanging fruit. Uh, it's the things you hear the most because people want that quality of life. But just like Josh had said, when you look at that area where the dots are, the green dots, it's how do you shift those? How do you keep people from going outside and staying here and working? And so that's kind of one of the things that I wanted to just briefly talk about here is that, uh, this is something that we work with our partners. We call them project information forums or PIFs. Uh, you've heard me talk about this before. Um, we've did this, uh, you know, significantly at MITA. We're doing it here at the city as well. And so I'm just going to kind of give you some data here, um, just to kind of look back at some different years so you understand how this evolves. Uh, these are primarily with our partners, uh, such as GPEC, the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, or the Arizona Commerce Authority, or others. And sometimes they come to us on their own, based on our own efforts. But you got to understand that, uh, one of the things that GPEC and ACA offer to us, and we pay for one and the other comes from our taxes, is the fact that, uh, we're in competition with everybody, right? We're in competition with everybody out there. But at the same time, how do we showcase what we have going on here? And it is again, a team effort to prepare sites and then also market those sites, not just on a developer's behalf or a landowner's behalf, but on the city's behalf. Because we're not here to pick and choose, but rather we want everybody to know what we have going on. And we're not talking just in the Phoenix area, or even in the entire state of Arizona, but nationwide and frankly internationally. And that's where our partners come in. We can do it, but we're a small department with limited resources. Or we can 10x our abilities by partnering with GPEC and ACA and others. And they then take those dollars and their larger staffs and they go out internationally. And sometimes we go international, but generally they do this for us and they bring those leads back to us. And so that's what you're seeing here above us is that, uh, in January to December of 2023, that was primarily while I was still at MITA, we had received 140, uh, different PIFs from GPEC and the ACA. We responded to 75 of those. Now, the question you may ask is why did you only respond to 75? Well, it's because you have to have the ability to respond to something. If they're asking for an existing building or they're asking for 3,000 acres, we don't have either, right? And so you have to be able to, to qualify, otherwise you're just going in the trash and you're using up precious resources from your staff time. So you absolutely want to target your responses so that you get the best chance for success. And so as you saw, I, I like to break those down. GPEC was 23 of those, ACA was two. Uh, then you have combos sometimes when GPEC and ACA, they work together. And so those were 26. And then we had local 24, uh, that came to us in that time at that, at that measurement. So it's, it's pretty great to see how that all works together. Again, January, they gipped off significantly. We went from 140, uh, to 64 received. People often ask, "Well, why is that?" Well, it's a whole slew of things, right? The, we are on a roller coaster ride of wavelengths where we ride these different cycles. And the city itself has to prepare for those cycles, both what we're at today, what we're going to be at tomorrow, what we're going to be at 10 years from now. Because we never know where that cycle is going to be. It could be political, it could be financial, it could be a whole different, uh, variety of different things. So again, you see that, we responded to 19. And then, uh, January through June 11th, uh, just this past week or a couple of days ago, uh, we had received up to 53, so a much higher, uh, response, uh, this year so far. And we responded to 19. So again, we're hoping that we'll be over the 100 mark as far as total received PIFs by the end of the year. So again, this is just a breakdown as per month. So again, you see January, February, sometimes they come in real slow and sometimes they come in hot and heavy. And you don't have a lot of time to answer on these. The mayor sees a lot of these in the, in a, in a formal request and, uh, just to kind of move forward. And obviously council has the ultimate say, uh, if something they're interested in. But, uh, the reality is, is that, you know, sometimes you have, you get a, you get a PIF and you've got two days to answer it. And, uh, you know, while we have a lot of this stuff systematically regulated, sometimes they throw you a curve ball and you've got to work with all your partners so that you, you, you can say to these guys, "Yes, we have the power. Yes, we have the water. Yes, we have the connections. Yes, we have the land." All these different things. And it is not just as simple as there's a piece of land, there's a, you know, inter, an interested enterprise and they go together. That's where it may start, but you have to work out all the details. And as we've all said and heard before, the devil is absolutely in the details. So again, for February through March and then through April, so you can see how they come in at different amounts at different times. So just to kind of aggregate, what does this look like? What does this mean for you all? So from January to June, we've had 52 total PIFs come in through GPEC and ACA. We've responded to 18. And I'll point out here in a second, the reason you see 18 instead of 19, like you said on the previous slide, was because we had a local one. And a local one doesn't go through them. And so sometimes the local one proceeds and goes a little further, farther, faster. Sometimes it comes to a screeching halt. This one was a battery factory that was really interested, but then they went, uh, radio silent on it. We never got, you know, the details as to how many jobs and what their average wage was going to be. Uh, they could start back up in a heartbeat and, and communicate directly back with us. We stay in contact with them, but sometimes you don't get that information, so it's hard to put it into, into the numbers. But regardless, you see, responded to 18 there. The average wage across those 18 was about 65, just short of $66,000. That's really high wages, that's really low wages, and that's your average. Of course, the number of jobs, that those responses, if they all said yes tomorrow, were interested, would be about 10,670. Uh, again, that could be more, it could be less, but it's just a good round number for you to understand. That's what they're telling us, that's what they're offering, that's what they're trying to accomplish when they're interested in looking at our sites and our city. Uh, and then of course, that's a potential capex of about $7 billion, $43,550, $50,000. That's just an initial investment into construction, infrastructure and those types of things. That is not including annual wages and other economic impacts that that would have. So it just kind of shows you that there's a real, there's real money out there, right? There's real, uh, opportunities. And so we have to, we have to do our part to attract that and, and, you know, like fishing, we've got to put our hook into it and reel them in here. So we responded to 18 of 52. Four of the 18 submissions to this point have generated interest. Doesn't mean the others aren't interested, just means they haven't generated interest yet. Three of the submissions receive follow-up for additional information. So that means they'll come through GPEC, they'll come through the ACA, they get on the horn with us, we start talking to the site selectors, then we get introduced to the company, we start going back and forth with them. I mean, it's a long process. And this is just the start to see if we can ever get to that point where they say, yes, we're ready to purchase property or lease a building or build something or whatever. And then again, one resulted in a site visit so far. So this is a law of numbers game. No matter which way you slice it, it's a law of numbers game. But it's really important on how we get there because if we don't do it, then we simply aren't in the game, right? You know, you've, you've heard the expression that if you're, if you're, what is it? If you're not at the table, you're, you're on the, you're on the menu or something, right? I mean, it's, the, the fact is, is that we have to constantly be selling ourselves, talking about our story, convincing all those out there that there's someplace else that someone else is convincing them to go. Why should they come here and do they know who we are? You know, it's really interesting to go places and see that while they understand who we are now, because we're out there a lot, we go to a lot of these things, we meet these same site selectors and, you know, it's a, it's a process. At the same time, if you just did it once, you don't know. They don't know who you are. I mean, it's the same reason why we call it, you know, Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, right? Because if you're coming from international, you don't know where Mesa's at. You know where Phoenix is at, right? We do the same thing internationally. You may not know where, you know, some of the airports are in France, but you know where Paris is at, right? So you, you allocate and you, you dial it in. So there's a myriad of ways to sell ourselves, so many. But one of the primary ways is through marketing. And marketing comes in various amounts of different ways of doing it. You've got purchase media, right? These are two national site selection magazines, highly revered, lots of readership, lots of online presences. And of course, the site selectors both read these things, see them, but they also know the people that publish them. And so when you go to those events and you talk with them, you start to realize that just like the economic development world, just like the development world in general, it's a really small community. And the more you're there, the more you're presenting yourself, the more you're standing out, the more you get noticed, the more you get remembered, and therefore the more you get interested, or they're interested in us. And so therefore they are soliciting our information so that they want to say, hey, I got a client, they want to come and take a look at what I remember you telling us. So it's one thing to put an ad out there, but you got to back it up with showing up, right? You got to go to these things, you got to meet these folks, you got to build relationships with them so that they remember you. And again, all kinds of ways. There's TV, there's media, there's radio. There's clearly the traditional marketing campaigns. There's earned media, there's paid media, and of course, there's travel. So all of these things boil into it. This truly is the ultimate team sport. And thank you. I'll turn it back over to Josh and if you have any questions, he'll be here to answer.
Thank you very much. Council, what questions do you have? Yes, Councilwoman Lerman.
Are we rail serve ready or are there still steps we need to take to become rail serve ready?
Yeah, so there's still some steps. So that is kind of that master plan. There is a spur currently that is serving some of the businesses in Maricopa. But this would significantly increase the, a number of businesses that would be able to be served.
And what is the timeline on the full completion?
So still working through the, the full timeline of that. One of the developers whom is working in this, and again, so this is kind of a master plan that had, could have multiple developers. One of them has come in recently for a pre-app with our development services team. And so they are moving through that process. Still too, a little bit too, too early to say this is exactly when that first business will, will come in. But they are diligently working through the process.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nor.
Thank you for the presentation. And I would like to know from a council perspective, what is the biggest hurdle to getting those businesses in the industrial park and going?
Yeah, so I think the biggest hurdle we've had in the past versus the biggest hurdle we'll have in the future may be different. And so in the past, really, one of the challenges we've had is really saying a site-ready position. And so as Christian, which, thank you, he does, there's a reason Christian is fantastic at talking to some of these groups. We put in a lot with these project information forums, the PIFs, and said, well, we think this could work, we think this worked. We really were, were maybe a little bit too early to get too much attention on, on Maricopa because we didn't have a site that was rail served. We were maybe a little bit too early. And so now getting to a point where we're saying, this is a site that is significantly more ready and in the very near future, sorry, I don't have the exact timeline for you, will be ready to go. And so having some of these things is more exciting for groups. And so in the past, it would probably, I would say, site readiness. Now transitioning forward is just going to be recognition and saying, this is the place that you need to be. Because we still are not necessarily known as the place that has big industry.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nor. Councilwoman Freddie.
Thanks for the presentation. It was great to see some of the stuff that's on there. Understanding what's coming to the city of Maricopa, sorry, understanding what's coming to the city of Maricopa is important, but also how we're going about getting other folks to come to the city of Maricopa is important. Because there's people out there, all you hear is what they want. And it's funny, I don't know if anybody realized, but there's some kind of Facebook glitch and it's bringing up stuff from like two years ago and popping up on your screen. And I asked a question two years ago and I said, what does everybody want to see in the city of Maricopa? And it was hilarious because I was reading it and I'm like, oh, we did that, oh, we did that. And I started answering everybody, saying, oh yeah, the Home Depot just opened, hey, Lowe's is opening. And one of them said, Wincor, and I'm like, nah, not yet. But when you look at it, you're, there's so much happening that people kind of almost forget what we wanted two years ago. And we're getting so much of it today. And what we'll have two years from today will be a lot of what we're asking for today. The mayor, Ben and I held a small business meeting of sorts here in this room. And we got to hear from, what was it, 40, 30, 40, home, small businesses that are just businesses here in the city of Maricopa. And one of the most important things they were talking about was the ability for them to expand their business in space, affordable space, right? Because they see Vestar coming in and opening up a space, but they, they look at it as this is not something that I could ever get into, right? In a lot of cases. They want office space, they want that mixed-use space. That's something that we'd love to see more emphasis put on. And I know we're doing, looking at it with Australia Gin, and you mentioned some of that. But that, that, finding ways to get that stuff done needs to happen. Because that is what's holding back the smaller to medium-sized business becoming the larger employer in, not largest, of course, but a larger employer in the city of Maricopa. Because if you can take your business that has two or three employees, make it a business with 10 to 15, now we're talking. Because then they go from 15 to 20 to 20 to 30 to 50. And, and, and that bigger business then spawns 10 other businesses, right? And it just, that's what happens. That's your organic growth. And sadly, we're stuck without the place for it, the incubator. But I'm not saying we need incubator space. What I'm saying is we need the ability through private investment and, and development to have those kinds of spaces. So when you get an opportunity and you guys are talking to people out there, that I believe is one of the number one priorities that we have in the city of Maricopa is that smaller to medium-sized business space. The industrial space is great, right? And when they come and they bring in 10,000 employers, employees, I'm sorry, or jobs for our people to fill as employees, that's going to be wonderful and we're going to love it. But we have to make sure that we understand that we have a lot of smaller businesses already existing that want to grow. And all we need is a little fertilizer to make that happen. But thank you so much for your presentation. It was great to hear from you and that bearded guy over there. I don't know what his name was, again, Christian something. But it was great to hear from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Freddie. Councilwoman Marsh.
Yes, thank you, Josh and Christian. Great presentation. I see three barriers that we've got, got to get past. One is the 347 for employee and truck access. Rail access, we're fine. Second is the seed farm road extension of Smith, Inc. out to I-10. That's critical. And the third is somebody's got to be first. Once we get one, the others will come. Because the first one will prove the feasibility and the success of Maricopa as a business and industrial site. Let's get those done and watch the dam break.
Thank you, Councilwoman Marsh. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I would be curious to note in your discussions, and in discussions of, of our growth, if you will, what is the timeline for some of the numbers that are being used? That we're going to be at 500,000 or we're going to be at a million people in this period of time? What are the timelines that are being used for those discussions? And where are we on those timelines as far as people need to make them?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Was that question as related to population? I apologize, I struggled to hear just a little bit, but I think you're asking that population timeline where we're going to see some of those numbers?
Well, the, the timeline that's been impacting that, what, when did we, I know, we, Home Depot was one of the biggest ones that we were trying and trying and trying to get over the years, getting close. We had a number of individuals and had a population number that we're using. So yes, in answer to your question, it would be probably based on the populations that we are expecting to, to have to cope with or, or to serve. And so what are those timelines? And how effective have we been in actually being able to realize them?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, each of the different businesses have different demographics that they're trying to hit. For, for many of the businesses, that number of 100,000 is, is really what they're, they're looking at. We have, and we tell this story to many groups, is, is, is we have a more captive audience of folks that want to shop local here. And so in some of the cities that might be larger and you do that pen drop like I showed earlier, they might have, you know, 100,000 residents, but they're going to potentially be in multiple different, there, there's more competition in different ways. We have sort of a, a wonderful island here in the city of Maricopa that our residents want to stay here. So we might not have hit that 100,000, but with our 80,000, we believe that many of these businesses can be successful. And so we can kind of nudge and say, you may have wanted to wait two more years, but how about we move, pull that trigger and move forward now? And so I think we're seeing that with some of the developments like Home Depot and what's coming in around them. And I think we'll continue to see that with what's going around Lowe's and, and continue with Vestar and many of the other projects that are coming in.
Thank you.
So I, I don't mean, I don't mean to be confusing or to you because I'm, a lot of times when I'm talking to folks, I'm confused what they're asking me as well, is when will we be able to realize having an employment number of 100,000 people employed here in Maricopa so that we can do some, some good work with the 347? We can ensure that the 347 is, is safe and passable. And even, even if it isn't, we've got enough population within the city. That, that's not something that we have to be as concerned or worried about. So that's what I ask about how long? And I, and I, and I think, you know, when we're talking to people out in the streets and I would say, well, the council members probably experienced the same thing. People are always wanting to know when we're going to be able to realize that. When is, when, when are we going to be able to see the stores, the restaurants, the facilities that we need to support 100,000 people? And I, I'm not asking you to be a mind reader or, or a CCR or what have you, but I'm just curious in your, in your discussions and your, your discussions with your team, what kind of timelines are, are being discussed?
Again, thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't know if there's one time that these will all come. I think as Councilwoman Freddie, I think it's, trickles in over time. I think we're seeing many of these things and what we saw just a few years ago requesting, much of that's happening. And I'll think we'll see that every year as we keep coming back and saying, there's a little bit more coming, there's a little bit more coming. And as the word gets out, Maricopa is a great place, we will continue to see that growth and can you just see new businesses come and thrive here? Christian wants to take a crack at this one, so I'll gladly let him.
Please. So I was just going to tag team here, Vice Mayor. So I understand what you're asking. Everybody wants that easy to answer question of when we hit 100,000, we're going to have X, Y, and Z. Okay, this is an ever-present, ever-moving target that doesn't have that. And you talked about Home Depot. Vice Mayor, you'll remember all those ICSCs we went to in Las Vegas where we would talk with Home Depot and they'd say, when you have 50,000 people, come back and talk to us. And then we hit 50,000 people. And then they said, hey, well, come back and talk to us when you have 75. And then, you know, it just kept fluctuating all over the place. It's always moving and we had nothing to do with it. It's just, it was difficult. So one of the things I think it's important to understand and that you guys can talk to your constituents with is distinguish between retail and industrial, okay? Or, or the job creation centers. So it's not to say that when a Home Depot opens, we don't have jobs. We do. We have a different type of jobs. We have jobs where they follow the numbers of people in the houses. So if Home Depot comes here, they're going, okay, we're, we know we have enough people in the area for us to come and, and survive and make enough money to, you know, pay out, right? That employs people, but you're not usually seeing a lot of $100,000 a year jobs at the retail establishments. It's really important for the quality of life of the people that live here, but they are not giving you that industrial employment base. On the other side, where you have momentum and you have production of sites that are ready in the industrial space, one of the things you find is that when that first one lands, like you just talked about, Councilwoman Marsh, that when that first one lands, the second one, and then two becomes four and four becomes eight, et cetera, et cetera. Because you've solved the innate problems of infrastructure. And that's when you have 300 jobs. And that's when you have 1,000 jobs. And now what happens is those people can either travel in from Chandler or they can buy a home here and live here and now frequent those retail places. So sometimes we just kind of creep up on the retail because this is how many we, people we have here in the numbers of, of the census data. But when you start adding five and 10 industrial and 10,000 jobs, suddenly you have 15,000 people that moved in overnight because they want to stay and live and work near their industry, right? So it's an ever-evolving, ever-shifting number. So I think it's really important in order to answer that question, distinguish whether you're talking retail or whether you're talking industrial. I hope that helps.
Thank you very much, both of you. I appreciate both.
Vice Mayor, I will note, so I pulled back to a, one of our slides and just kind of showing again it from the commercial. So we do see that growth over the last couple of years and seeing that trend where we're looking at about 200,000 square feet of, of commercial, non-residential. Where five years ago, we were about half of that and seeing that trend tracking in that direction. So we expect that we'll continue to see those types of trends.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep. So I really want to appreciate the question you asked regarding roadblocks. That was definitely on my list as well. It's important for us to understand that. And as you see roadblocks and we can help, I, I know we all want to help in any way, shape, or form. And then I also appreciate the comment on Flex Space. My thought when looking at this and when thinking about what is it that I'm asking for or that I'm needing is I totally understand how we're working with our industrial park or our business park. I think that's working its way through. We're managing whatever infrastructure we need. We're meeting with the folks that are interested in the available land. But I don't want to just be focused on that piece. I want to know, Flex Space, can we encourage people to bring those offices for small businesses? Can we encourage other industrial, other creative locations that might have other things that we can be looking at in parallel? Because I, I think when you mentioned the strategic plan RFP, that's where I'm going to get some of that meat in terms of how are we looking to the future and what additional elements are we adding to the list of things that we're out searching and marketing to for things that will come to the city of Maricopa? So I don't want to, I, I, I love the industrial park, love the conversation on retail and commercial, but I also want to see a big picture in regards to what all do we have to offer, what can we go after? I think Flex Space is a huge opportunity, huge opportunity. So we get that. I was curious in, in looking at tools that are available to us. So we have GPEC and we have ACA. Do they ever partner with a city to, to focus on an area, focus on an industry, to give us a little more of a push? Is there any type of partnership or tools that they offer us to get a little more oomph us to get a little more oomph than just the PIFs that we're getting? I would like to learn more about that as well.
I thank you, Mayor. I, I thank you for your comments. If I can, I'll try to hit a few of those.
Okay.
First, you said if there's anything that you guys could do. Let me just say, you guys do it. This type of a meeting where we say Vestar, and every one of you are like, we want this. When we talk with groups, as, as Christian said, we're competing against not only other cities, but this other states, other nations. And so we can talk about, other states might be able to give some different incentives than the, the state of Arizona can, but what we will often say is a business-friendly climate, a group of council members who want you here. And that is not what they get other places. So that is huge, and we're so appreciative of that. That makes our job as staff a whole lot easier. I mean, really, that's, that's so impactful, when, when they can see, and we can show a little snippet, say, just watch our last council meeting, and they go, oh, wow, that was, that was not what I've seen in other areas. So that's, that's great. I would say, if not every, most every developer that we talk with, when they say, we want to bring in this, we say, and we really would love to see some additional office space. Here's a location we think would work really great. And so that is something we're regularly trying to push, because we know the need for. That's why we highlighted this presentation. It is such a need within the city, and we're pushing hard to see that. Now, Councilmember Menfretti talked about affordable office space. We cannot control what those rents will be, and we do know that they are higher, and that's because of the scarcity of some of those things. We are higher than a lot of other places, even though their vacancy is fairly low. And the, I apologize, Mayor, I was trying to write down all of your questions. Give me the last one again, and I'll, I'll
I'm sorry, what? Yeah, I'm really curious about GPEC and ACA. Like, do they, I, I'm just brainstorming here, but do they, do they like hire out for partnerships where we can have them work with us on tools to
Yeah.
Bring in some of these PIFs to, you know, is there a closer relationship that we can establish? Just curious about that.
Thank you, Mayor. But thank you for the reminder on that. As I was writing down, didn't get the last one in there. But yeah, we are working with them regularly to try to enhance that relationship. Again, as we said from a few years ago, when we threw some of those things out, they said, we're not quite ready yet for some of that. That's changing. And so because of that, the relationship with the city is also changing, where there's, oh, yep, we are going to bring more people you, to you. They think of us more on top of mind, because Christian is, is bounding on their door every day. Hey, what about this? How's this going? And so there is a, a higher relationship, I think, than we've had in the past. We have recently proposed some things that are a little bit unique to what they typically do, and saying, hey, what if we did a tour of Pinale County and focus on the city of Maricopa?
Love it. That's exactly what I'm talking about.
And so we've been trying to pitch that to them. Understand that they also have to be a little bit careful, just in the same way that every city wants them to focus specifically on them. We're trying to pitch it to them in a way where we say, this is the, you know, the, the more rural, the outside of the, the main Phoenix metro area, so let's do a tour of all of these areas, and we can do some partnership with Casa Gran, Coolidge, Pinale County as a whole, and say, let's focus on this area, because we know this is where the growth is. So we are trying to work with them to get some site selectors that they basically are sponsoring, at bringing maybe a, a day out in Maricopa, or even a, a half a day here. And so that's in the works. I can't promise that's going to happen, but we've been pitching it pretty hard to them, and they're, I think they're open to, to the idea. And we're typically working, primarily working with GPEC on that kind of concept. And so it's a little bit different what they normally do, but yeah, we'd love to see it.
Very good.
So yeah, I think that kind of aligns with what you're, you're
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Those kind of creative ideas, out-of-the-box thinking. The strategic plan, that will be a bigger, from a higher level view. Okay, perfect. One last thing, at one point, I want to say, two, three years ago, we created a report, and I think it was rather simple to do, because our residents were worried that all of our commercial space was being used up. And we did a easy, simple report that basically said, here's what we have for commercial space and what areas. It's not being eaten up, we have plenty. At the time, I want to say, and maybe somebody will remember, at the time, I want to say, we had like two and a half more space for commercial than we did for residential. I'm getting it shaking back there of the head. Yeah. And so I think we just want to make sure our residents understand, no, we have plenty of space for commercial. So if the, you know, if it's a report that's relatively easy, and I think it was pretty simple to create, I think that'd be good to refresh. I know I'd be interested in it. I used it all the time, two, three years ago, making sure people understood, because they're really worried about that.
Again, Mayor Smith, thank you. I, I, we can create those things. We highlighted this, kind of a similar report to that, just showing on the east side, there is still space. Just because you only see the houses
Yeah, I like your map.
Doesn't mean the commercial won't fall. And that's just kind of, again, helping folks understand what that trend is.
Yeah.
But we can absolutely work on, kind of, refreshing that report.
I can dig it up if, if we're curious what it looked like, but it was just very clear and very specific. I like the map, too. I appreciate you putting that in there as well.
Yeah, and I just want to, I mean, so, you know, me and my department are speaking this, but Development Services Team drives so much of these things, and so we have a great relationship with, with that. And so I will, I'll say, I'll
Very good.
Lean on them a little bit to, to pull that
Yeah, a hundred percent. Rudy probably knows what report I'm talking
Yeah, I think he was probably shaking his head.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know if he was shaking his head like, oh, Lord. She just asked for that again. But anyway. Council, any additional comments, questions? Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Christian. Appreciate that. That ends our city council meeting for this evening. Thank you all for coming.